How am I going to get through this? Yes, please. There's the one with the railing over there. Having reached the date an hour designated in the Selectmen's warrant for the May 6, 2024, annual town meeting, I hereby call the meeting to order. My name is Amy Kular and I am the Bourne Town Meeting Moderator. Mr. Town Clerk Barry Johnson, how many voters have been checked into the meeting?
One hundred and seventy-two.
He responds, "One hundred and seventy-two registered voters." I declare there is a quorum present. Mr. Town Clerk, has the town meeting warrant been duly posted as required by law?
Yes, it has.
He responds in the affirmative. Madam Stenographer, please note for the record that the town clerk responds that the warrant has been duly posted. Please, everyone, silence your cellphones and other electronic devices. At this time, I will ask you all to please stand and remain standing until I ask you to take your seats and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us now offer a special moment of silence to our brave men and women who serve our nation in the military, public safety, and intelligence services at home and abroad, and also to remember those town employees who have passed away since last town meeting. Thank you. Please be seated.
I'm, Madam Moderator.
Is it on?
I have a motion.
Can you talk into the mic? Tap it. Yep, you got it. Just, you have to be a little louder. I recognize Chair of the Select Board Mary Jane Mistrangelo.
This is a moment of personal privilege. I want to take an opportunity to thank Jared McDonald for his years of service on the Select Board. He chose not to run for reelection this coming year, so this will be his last year, his last annual town meeting as a Select Board member.
Thank you.
So to thank Jared.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you. All right. Welcome back to town meeting, everyone. What's going to happen now is that I'm going to talk for a few more minutes. I'm going to provide you with lots of information. We're going to go over some housekeeping matters and vote on two motions that will move town meeting business along more smoothly. Every voter seated in the audience should have electronic voting devices, but the votes that we take during the next few minutes are going to be voice votes, okay? And they're that straightforward, so please bear with me and please don't make me count your votes during the next couple of minutes. Also, I just wanted to give everyone the awareness that in about twenty minutes, I'm going to call for a motion to recess the annual town meeting as close to 7:30 as we can get. We will then convene the special town meeting, which has one article, and after the special town meeting business is concluded, we will return back to the annual town meeting, just so that everyone's on the same page and knows where we're going tonight. I have appointed Wendy Weston as my deputy moderator. Wendy is seated in front of the stage. Wendy will be keeping time of anyone who speaks, and she will assist you with a motion or any other matter. If you need assistance during the meeting and you can't get my attention, please speak to Wendy. I have appointed Sergeant McConna as Sergeant at Arms. Seated in front of you on the stage, to my right are the Finance Committee. In the back there, the Assistant Town Clerk, Town Council, Town Council's on my left, and to his left are the Select Board. Seated behind my podium is the person who brings us the electronic voting. I have reserved the front row here for the Planning Board and School Committee. Now, does everyone have a voter handbook? If not, please raise your hand and someone will bring you one. Does every registered voter have an electronic voting device? If not, please raise your hand and a teller will bring you one. At this time, I will now take a moment to explain the electronic voting system. When you checked in, you were given a handset. That handset is for voting and is issued to you and only you. Using a handset issued to someone else is strictly forbidden. Before each vote, I will summarize, I will name the motion or amendment being decided. I'll then announce the beginning of a thirty-second interval during which you will vote via your handset. To vote yes, you press the green button. To vote no, you press the red button. If you accidentally push the wrong button, you can switch your vote by pressing the correct button. If you don't want to participate in a vote, don't push any buttons. When the thirty-second voting interval is over, I will announce that voting is complete. Shortly thereafter, I will announce the results of each vote. If you need to temporarily leave your seat and exit the auditorium, please leave your handset with the exit staff at the rear. They will label your handset with your name and reissue it when you return to the auditorium. When leaving the auditorium at the conclusion of business this evening, please make sure to place your handset in one of the bins at the exit desk. Now, we are going to do a practice vote to make sure that everyone here is comfortable with operating their handset. Remember, it is green for yes and red for no. All right, the first question for the Town of Bourne tonight is, will the Celtics win the NBA championship this season? Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare that the Celtics will win the championship. Fifty-six, fifteen. All right. I am informed by the Board of Selectmen that if this town meeting does not conclude this evening, it is their intention to move that at recess and reconvene here tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. This town meeting is governed by Robert's Rules of Order as interpreted by the book Town Meeting Time. I will spare you all of reading all of the moderator's rules tonight. They are detailed, beginning on page five in your voter handbook. I will address parliamentary matters as they arise during the course of the meeting. When an article is called and you intend to speak on that article, please leave your seat and come down to the front near one of the two microphones so that I may recognize you. Generally, you will have up to three and a half minutes to speak. I reserve the right to change the amount of time allotted if we have a lot of interest in speaking on certain articles so that everyone can be heard. My deputy is keeping time for me. Please speak only to the motion on the floor. Do not be repetitive. Be concise and to the point. And one thing that I will not tolerate at any town meeting are personal attacks or other similar behavior from a speaker. You will be declared out of order, and in accordance with Massachusetts law, you may be removed from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms and confined until the conclusion of the session. This town meeting is being televised and videotaped for later televising on the local Comcast Access Cable channel. As I said earlier, there is a stenographer keeping an official written transcript of the proceedings. As a matter of longtime custom within the Town of Bourne, it is solely within the moderator's discretion to allow non-voters to address the town meeting. If anything tonight interferes with your ability to hear, speak, or participate in the town meeting to your satisfaction, you may interrupt the meeting by calling on me and declaring a point of personal privilege, and your concern will be heard and hopefully addressed. If you aren't able to get out of your seat to speak, please get my attention or Wendy's attention, and we will get you a portable microphone. At this time, I will now entertain a motion that the meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant and the constable's return of service on that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read resolutions or warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them instead by article number and/or page in the voter handbook. Do I have such a motion? I have a motion, I have a motion from the audience. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. So this is going to be a voice vote. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the warrant and of the constable's return of service, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed. I declare it was unanimous. This question is directed to the Select Board Chair and Finance Committee Chair. If all of the recommended articles in the annual town meeting that require raising and appropriating of funds are passed, will the town be at their maximum levy limit?
Yes, we would.
They both respond in the affirmative. I'm informed by the Board of Selectmen that there is a Bourne Rule Resolution. This resolution is printed in your handbook on page 119. Madam Chair of the Select Board, I'll entertain your motion to adopt the Proposition Two and a Half Resolution as printed in the voter handbook.
I move that we adopt the Proposition Two and a Half Bourne Rule Resolution, Resolution as printed in the handbook.
Thank you. May I have a second? We have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please say nay. I did hear a nay, so it was not unanimous, but I declare the motion passes. Thank you. All right. I am informed, finally, that by the Town Administrator, in accordance with Section 1.1.9 of the Town Bylaws, there are articles which the Select Board and the Finance Committee have each voted are essential to the exercise of the town's corporate functions. These articles are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 13, and 14. All other articles of this annual town meeting will be drawn by lottery. Thank you very much for your patience in getting through my announcements. We will now move on to the articles of this annual town meeting. The first essential article is Article 1, which is printed on page 12 of the voter handbook. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article 1? I hear that they do. I recognize Jared McDonald. Thank you. Article 1 on page 12 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. I recognize Jared McDonald.
Thank you. We move that the town vote to approve the use of a consent agenda, including each of the articles set forth in the warrant in Article 1, and further that the town vote to approve Article 1 as set forth in the warrant, and further that the, that with respect to Article 1 through 5, to transfer $100,000 from free cash to fund costs related to payments and accrued contractual compensation.
I will second that motion, Madam Moderator. Thank you. Mr. McDonald, you have the floor.
The articles listed in Article 1, items listed in the Consent Agenda reoccur annually and are housekeeping in nature. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve all of the Consent Agenda articles at one time and authorize a... Stand by, please. Sorry, I had the wrong paper. I apologize. Housekeeping in nature, a yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve all of the Consent Agenda articles at one time. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the town meeting would vote on the items individually.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article? I recognize Tom Joyce. Is your microphone on? Can you try it? Can you tap it? Okay, you have to speak much louder into the microphone so that everyone can hear you.
Yes, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee voted seven to zero in favor of this article.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any further discussion on Article 1? Seeing none, we will now move to a vote on Article 1. This vote requires a simple majority. Everyone should be holding their handheld device. When I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed. One hundred and seventy in favor and eight against. Article 2 on page 15 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we do.
I recognize Chair Mary Jane Mistrangelo.
We move that the sum of $79,148,959 be hereby appropriated from the funding sources listed below to defray the expenses of the municipal town departments in the chart entitled, "These amounts are to be voted," as shown below for the fiscal year starting on July 1, 2024, to and including June 30, 2025. Funding sources, raise and appropriate from the FY25 tax levy and other general revenues from the town, $76,489,961. PL-874 grant funds, $125,000. Ambulance fund, $1,500,000. Conservation Commission receipts reserved for appropriation, $30,000. Community preservation fund revenues for debt expense, Community subject management program, $10,023. Waterway Improvement Fund, $140,000. Capital stabilization for debt expense, $593,000. For a total of $79,148,959. These amounts are to be voted. General Government, $4,614,181. Public Safety, $13,232,474. Public Works, $3,540,128. Health and Human Services, $1,031,69. Culture and Recreation, $1,65,186. Bourne Public Schools, $26,652,537. Upper Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, $3,750,754. Shared Costs, $19,329,055. Debt Service, $5,933,575. For a total of $79,148,959.
Thank you. Chair Mistrangelo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Many of my comments are based on the Town Administrator, Marlene McCollum's budget message to the Select Board back in January. Our Town Administrator has shown outstanding leadership throughout the FY25 budget process. The Select Board, Finance Committee, Bourne Public School Committee, and the School Committee for Upper Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, and the superintendents of both schools, held a joint meeting in November 2023 to discuss an overall strategy for the FY25 budget to avoid an operational override. The general direction provided by the group was to attempt to hold the town and school budget increases to a 3.5% increase over FY24. That goal was achieved in the final budget. In her budget message, Marlene thanked Finance Director Erica Fleming, Town Accountant Michael Ellis, and Assistant Town Administrator Liz Hartsgrove, all of the department heads and administrative staff for their tireless efforts and assistance while building the proposed FY25 budgets. She said that the discussions with each department were thoughtful and enlightening, with a clear emphasis on providing high-quality service as efficiently and effectively as possible without wasting your resources. The operating budget is level service and remains balanced without the use of free cash. Detailed information on the budget can be found in Appendix B of the voter handbook. Sources and uses on pages 73 to 75 gives an overview of revenues and expenditures. The FY25 town budget on pages 77 to 95 provides salaries and expenses by department, and the five-year plan is on pages 96 to 97. The Town of Bourne is in a favorable financial position with a proposed budget that maintains a strong community service provision while conservatively estimating revenue and strengthening reserves. The town continues to remain in compliance with all previously adopted financial policies. The Town Administrator established a financial policy working group this year with Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee members for a comprehensive overhaul of the financial policies. Although the revised policies are not yet effective and are in the final stages of policy review by the Select Board, those discussions have guided and influenced the budget process for fiscal year '25. The recommended total FY25 general fund operating budget is $79,148,959, which is a 1.88% increase over last year's final approved budget appropriation. We are carefully containing costs while continuing to work within a period of higher inflation and controlled tight labor market in the Cape Cod region. The budget increase for town services does not contain any new initiatives, new positions, or additional staff. The town is in the third and final year of the collective bargaining agreements with public employee unions, and the ratified wage increases for FY25 are incorporated into the recommended budget. Wages have increased slightly in order to remain competitive in the current labor market. The town has worked diligently over the past year to fill vacancies, and we have been operating at a very close-to-full staff for most of FY24. We anticipate keeping vacancies to a minimum in FY25 as well, and will maintain our strong recruiting and retention efforts. It is important to note that while many public safety departments across the state are experiencing severe hiring challenges, our public safety department hiring has been very successful. Under the leadership of our Town Administrator, the fiscal year '25 budget represents the collaborative effort of all departments and the schools to provide the services the town needs without a Proposition Two and a Half override. We all know that inflation is more than two and a half percent, the two and a half percent limitation on the town for raising property taxes. For now, the town is operating within that constraint. However, there are stresses and services are constrained. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve the general fund operating budget for fiscal year '25 from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that there would be no approved operating budget for fiscal year '25. The Select Board voted unanimously, 5-0-0, to recommend approval of the motion on this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Chair Jim Sullivan.
Thank you. The Finance Committee voted seven to zero in favor of this article.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on Article 2? Are you taking this, or is Marlene?
Marlene, you want to explain what departments?
Town Administrator will answer that question. Thank you. Everyone has to talk into the microphone tonight, please, as loud as me.
Health and Human Services includes the Council on Aging, the Health Department, and our VNA contract. Culture and Recreation includes the Jonathan Bourne Public Library and the Recreation Department.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 2? Seeing none, we will now move to a vote on Article 2. This vote requires a simple majority. Does everyone have their handheld device? When I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 200 in favor and eight in opposition. All right, at this time, we are going to move over to the special town meeting, so I would entertain a motion to recess the annual town meeting. I have someone moving from the crowd. Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. I have a motion and a second to recess the annual town meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a voice vote on that motion. All those in favor of recessing annual town meeting, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. I declare it was unanimous. Having reached the date an hour designated in the warrant for the May 6, 2024 Special Town Meeting, I hereby call that meeting to order. Mr. Town Clerk, how many voters have checked into this special town meeting? We're going to get the exact number. Mr. Town Clerk, how many voters have checked into this special town meeting? He responds, "Two hundred and twenty-six voters." I declare there is a quorum present. Mr. Town Clerk, has the Special Town Meeting warrant been duly signed and posted as required by law? He responds in the affirmative. Wendy is still my deputy moderator. She is seated down in front of the stage. She will help you with a motion or other matter. Please make your cellphones are still silent. Does everyone have a voter handbook for Special Town Meeting? If not, please raise your hand and the tellers will bring you one. I will entertain a motion at this time that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant and the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them instead by article number. Okay, I have a motion from the crowd again. May I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the warrant and the constable's return of service for the Special Town Meeting, please indicate by saying aye. All those in opposition, please say no. I declare it was unanimous. All right, so we will now move to Article 1 of the Special Town Meeting. Article 1 of the Special Town Meeting is on page 10 of your handbook and requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
Yes, we do.
I recognize MJ Mistrangelo.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,917,000 for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of...
transfer the sum of one million nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from ISWAM retained earnings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. M.J., you have the floor.
Thank you. Before I start, the comments on this, I want to say that Peter Meyer is not able to be here this evening. Something came up that he had to attend to. So, we had kind of equally distributed articles between the members of the Select Board, so some of us have, like, taken over, so if you see us shuffling a few papers, it's because we're doing our best to cover. This article provides the funding for, to cover the anticipated professional fees for the architectural and engineering services, as well as owner's project manager, to support the design and bidding services for the proposed relocation of the ISWAM maintenance and administrative facilities. This is necessary to move the current, where the office is currently, is going to be, become new area for landfilling, so we need to move it, and we are putting in a permanent building at this time. There's more information on the project available in Appendix D on pages one hundred and six to one hundred and eight of the Voter Handbook. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would provide the funding necessary to cover these expenses. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that there would be no funding to facilitate relocation of the ISWAM maintenance and administrative facilities, which would complicate expansion timing. The Select Board voted unanimously, five-zero-zero, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, seven-zero-zero, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on special town meeting Article One? Hearing none, we will now move to a vote on Article One. This vote requires a simple majority. Does everyone have their handheld device? When I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare that Article One has passed with a vote of one hundred and ninety-four in favor, nineteen in opposition. At this time, we have concluded all of the articles in the special town meeting, so I will entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. I have a motion from the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
I hear many seconds. Thank you. All those in favor of dissolving the special town meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I declare the motion to dissolve the special town meeting passed unanimously, and special town meeting is concluded. We will now move back to regular, annual town meeting, which is Article Three, the third essential article. Article Three on page seventeen of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
We do.
I recognize Jared McDonald.
We move the sum of one million six hundred one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars be authorized to be expended by the sewer commissioners for the operation of the sewer system for the fiscal year starting on July 1, 2024, to and including June 30, 2025, as follows. Salaries and wages, two hundred and twenty-six thousand fifty dollars. Expenses, one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Reserve fund, one hundred thousand dollars. And we further move that the sum of one hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars be transferred to the General Fund to offset sewer enterprise indirect expenses, and in order to meet this appropriation, we moved that the sum of one million six hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and two dollars be raised from sewer enterprise receipts, and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars be transferred from sewer retained earnings.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article is to appropriate the transfer from available funds and will provide money to operate the sewer department or take any other action in relation to thereof. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would approve the sewer enterprise operating budget for fiscal year 2025 from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that there would be no approved sewer enterprise operating budget for fiscal year 2025. The Select Board voted unanimously, five-zero-zero, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Jim Sullivan.
The Finance Committee voted seven to zero in favor of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Three? Seeing none, we will now move to a vote on Article Three. This vote requires a simple majority. Everyone should have their handheld device ready. When I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with two hundred and five in favor and twelve opposed. We will now move on to Article Four. Article Four on page eighteen of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article Four?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Chair Mary Jane Mastrangelo.
We move the sum of twelve million two hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars be authorized to be expended for the operation of the Integrated Solid Waste Management Department for the fiscal year starting on July 1, 2024, to and including June 30, 2025, as follows. Salaries and wages, two million four hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. Expenses, eight million three hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Reserve fund, six hundred thousand dollars. Host community fee, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we further move that the sum of two million five hundred and three thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars be transferred to the General Fund to offset ISWAM enterprise indirect expenses, and to, in order to meet this appropriation, we moved that the sum of fourteen million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars be raised from ISWAM enterprise receipts.
Second.
Chair Mastrangelo, you have the floor.
Thank you. This article approves the operating budget of ISWAM for the coming year, including ISWAM operational budget, salaries and wages, host community fee in the ISWAM reserve fund, and the General Fund administrative fees. The ISWAM budget includes the costs associated with disposal of the town's municipal solid waste and the residential drop-off center. ISWAM will continue to pay for curbside trash pickup and curbside recycling, and the town has consistently received host community fees in excess of the budgeted amount of six hundred thousand dollars. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would approve the ISWAM enterprise operating budget for fiscal year 2025 from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that there would be no approved ISWAM enterprise operating budget for fiscal year 2025. The Select Board voted unanimously, five-zero-zero, to recommend approval of the motion on this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, seven-zero-zero, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion now on Article Four? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote now on Article Four. This vote requires a simple majority. Everyone should have their handheld device. When I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with two hundred and eleven in favor and seven opposed. We will now move to Article Five. Article Five on page nineteen of your handbook requires a two-thirds majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Chair Mary Jane Mastrangelo.
We move that the town vote to appropriate four million three hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred dollars to pay costs of the capital outlay projects listed in the schedule printed below, and to meet this appropriation, we move, one, transfer the sum of one million eight thousand two hundred dollars from free cash; two, transfer the sum of fifty-two thousand dollars from sewer enterprise retained earnings; three, transfer the sum of one million twelve thousand dollars from ISWAM retained earnings; and four, transfer the sum of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from Waterways Improvement Fund. We further move to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow the sum of two million one hundred thousand dollars under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-Four, Section Seven of the General Laws as amended and supplemented, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-Four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The capital budget fiscal year 2025. One, Police Department. Transportation ATV replacement, thirty-five thousand dollars, free cash. Two, Police Department Transportation, five police vehicles, four hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, free cash. Three, Police Department Equipment Rifle Replacement, one hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, free cash. Four, Facilities Infrastructure, Town Hall Elevator, two hundred thousand dollars, free cash. Five, Facilities Infrastructure. Interior/Exterior Doors and ADA Controls, seventy thousand dollars, free cash. Six, Natural Resources Equipment, Replace Y-57 Carolina Skiff, sixty horsepower engine, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars, free cash. Seven, Public Works Equipment Trash and Recycling Carts, eighteen thousand dollars, ISWAM retained earnings. Eight, Public Works Infrastructure, Traffic Signals at Academy Drive and Main Street, thirty-five thousand dollars, free cash. Nine, Public Works Equipment, Vehicle Refurbishment for Sanitation and Recycling Trucks, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, ISWAM retained earnings. Ten, Schools Equipment, Bourne Middle School Compressor Replacement, forty thousand dollars, free cash. Eleven, Schools Planning, Jackson Field Bleachers Design and Engineering, thirty thousand dollars, free cash. Schools Infrastructure, Wastewater Treatment Repairs, two million one hundred thousand dollars borrowing. Thirteen, Shore and Harbor Committee, Department, Shore and Harbor Department, oh, Committee, I guess, Infrastructure Annual Dredging Ramp Pier Repair, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, Waterways Improvement Fund. Fourteen, Sewer Transportation, Replace M9 Ford F-250, fifty-two thousand dollars, retained earnings. Twelve, ISWAM Equipment, 2020 Cat Bulldozer, six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, retained earnings. ISWAM Infrastructure, Replace Paper Net East Road, one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, retained earnings. Fourteen, ISWAM Infrastructure CCTV Camera Upgrade, sixty thousand dollars, retained earnings.
I second the motion.
You have, Chair Mastrangelo, you have the floor.
Thank you. This article requests the funding for the fiscal year twenty-five Capital Improvement Budget, recommendation of the Capital Outlay Committee. The items recommended in this article are those which have been deemed to be the highest priority. The FY25 Capital Improvement Plan is in Appendix C, starting on page ninety-nine of the Voter Handbook. There are three sections. The first section on page one hundred is FY25 Funding Plan, listing all projects and the funding source for this year. The second section on page one oh one is a breakdown of the FY25 requests by expenditure category for planning, infrastructure, transportation, technology, and equipment. The third section on pages one oh two to one oh four is the Five-Year Capital Outlay Program, which shows the expenditures anticipated from FY25 to FY29. This year's capital improvement recommendation expenditures are five million forty-seven thousand two hundred dollars, of which four million three hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred is funded in this article, and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is covered under Community Preservation Requests in Articles Seven and Eight. Town Department Capital Expenditure Requests total one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred dollars, of which one billion two hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred is funded in this article. ISWAM Retained Earnings will pay a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of capital expenses related to DPW's Curbside Collection Program. The Waterways Fund will pay two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the dredging and pier replacement. School Department Capital Expenditure Requests are two million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The biggest part of that is the two million one hundred thousand dollar repair of the wastewater treatment plant that services Bourne Intermediate School, Bourne Middle School, and Bourne High School that is over twenty years old. ISWAM Capital Improvements of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars will be paid by ISWAM Retained Earnings. Sewer Capital Improvements of fifty-two thousand dollars will be paid by Sewer Retained Earnings. The Capital Outlay Committee has worked with departments to identify priorities and to establish a replacement schedule for equipment. We would like to commend our department heads for their ongoing efforts to see grant funding and to reduce costs to the town. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would approve the capital expenditures recommended by the Capital Outlay Committee for fiscal year 2025. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the capital expenditures recommended by the Capital Outlay Committee would not be funded, and these needs would not be addressed in fiscal year 2025. The Select Board voted unanimously, five-zero-zero, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, seven-zero-zero, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Five? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article Five. This vote requires a two-thirds supermajority. Does everyone have their handheld device? When I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and ninety-eight in favor and nineteen opposed. The next essential article is Article Thirteen. Article Thirteen is on page twenty-nine of your handbook, and it requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Serunian.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from free cash.
You have the floor, Ms. Serunian.
The Financial Policy Guideline for Stabilization Reserves establishes the target of six percent of general fund operating budget expenses to be held in reserve. At the time of this writing, there has been some market volatility that is impacting the town's investment revenue in the short term. By the end of the fiscal year, it is anticipated that the fund will be within the stated financial policy guideline as of February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. The balance in the stabilization fund is four million seven hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would authorize additional funds to be placed in the stabilization fund. A no or a nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that no additional funds would be deposited into the stabilization fund, and would not be consistent with stated financial policies. The Select Board voted unanimously five zero zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Priscilla Harcourt.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously seven zero zero in favor to recommend this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Thirteen? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article Thirteen. This vote requires a simple majority. Does everyone have their handheld device? When I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with two hundred and ten in favor and eleven in opposition. We will now move to the last essential article, which is Article Fourteen, on page thirty of your handbook, and it requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars for the purpose of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars from free cash.
Ms. Ferretti, you have the floor.
The goal of the Capital Stabilization Fund is to maintain three to five years of debt payments in reserve, and the town is currently exceeding five years at the current level of debt service. As of February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the balance in the Capital Stabilization Fund is three million one hundred sixty-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion provides funding to increase the Capital Stabilization Fund. This will ensure that the funds continue to be set aside for the long-term maintenance of the town's capital assets. A no or a nay vote opposed to the motion would not provide additional funding for the Capital Stabilization Fund, and would not be consistent with the stated financial guidelines. The Select Board voted unanimously five zero zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously seven zero zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Fourteen? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article Fourteen. This vote requires a simple majority. Taking, using your handheld device, you will be allowed to begin voting for thirty seconds. Um, when I tell you to, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with two hundred and eight in favor and nine in opposition. We are going to move to the lottery now, having concluded all the essential articles. Article Nineteen. Article Nineteen on page thirty-five of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article Nineteen?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
Ms. Ferretti, you have the floor.
This article removes the outdated monetary limit in restrictive language, providing the Conservation Commission with the ability to hire a consultant to review any necessary notice of intent or request for determination of applicability as deemed necessary by commission vote. A yea or a no vote in favor of this motion would amend the Wetland Protection Bylaw. A no or a nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo, and the Wetland Protection Bylaw would not be changed. The Select Board voted unanimously five zero zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Carla Emmons.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously seven zero zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Nineteen? Hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article Nineteen. This vote requires a simple majority. When I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to vote using your handheld device. Press green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and ninety-seven votes in favor and twenty-three opposed. We'll go to the next article. Article Eighteen. Article Eighteen on page thirty-four of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article Eighteen?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Serunian.
We move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
Ms. Serunian, you have the floor.
The change was recommended by the Financial Policy Working Group. The Financial Policy Working Group made this recommendation. The existing financial policies are in their final reading with the Select Board. And with the cost of goods increasing, the recommendation is to increase from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand, and ten thousand to twenty-five thousand for the purposes of this warrant. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would amend the general bylaw to raise the threshold for a capital project to at least twenty-five thousand. A no or a nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo, and the threshold would not be increased. The Select Board voted unanimously five zero zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously seven zero zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Eighteen? Hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article Eighteen. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, when I tell you, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with two hundred and five votes in favor, eleven opposed. Article Eleven. Article Eleven on page twenty-six of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town vote upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of two million ten... Yeah, sorry. Two million ten thousand three hundred and fifty-four point twenty-three cents for the Community Preservation Fund projects in special purpose reserves listed in the Community Preservation Fund Committee Report as printed below, and to meet the appropriations in reserve to appropriate the sum of one million six hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four point twenty-three cents from FY twenty-twenty-five estimated CPA revenues. Transfer twenty-nine thousand from historic preservation reserves, and transfer ninety-nine thousand five hundred from community housing preserves, and transfer two hundred thousand from FY twenty-twenty-five community housing revenues.
Ms. Ferretti, you have the floor.
You want me to read them? Yeah, okay.
She's good. Yep, you have the floor.
All right, sounds good. Katomet School House Preservation Group. Katomet, uh, project description is Katomet School Fumigation, twenty-nine thousand from historic preservation reserves. Bourne Affordable Housing Trust, uh, purpose community housing, ninety-nine thousand five hundred from community housing reserves. Bourne Housing Authority, uh, wind-swept acres, certain repairs to repairs, Building Seventy-Eight, Seventy-Nine to Eighty-One, Eighty, Eighty-Two, and Eighty-Four, Waterhouse Road, purpose community housing, two hundred thousand from community housing reserves. Subtotal requests, three twenty-eight fives. Community D, Community Preservation Committee, reserve for open space, open space is the purpose, one million two seventy-four, five ninety-seven, seventy-three. E, Community Preservation Committee, reserve for community housing, community housing is the purpose, two hundred and three thousand six twenty-eight point twenty-five. F, Community Preservation Committee, uh, project description, reserve for historic preservation, historic preservation purpose, again, two hundred and three thousand six twenty-eight twenty-five. Subtotal reserves, one million six eight one eight five four point two three, for a total request in reserves of two million ten thousand three fifty-four twenty-three.
Thank you. You can continue on. You have the floor still.
Okay, a yes or a no vote in favor of the motion provides funding for the proposed projects as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. A no or a nay vote opposed to the motion means that the funding would not be provided, and the projects cannot proceed at this time. The Select Board voted unanimously, oh, sorry, unanimously four zero one to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Rich Lavoy.
If I might, the Finance Committee met with the Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee and reviewed all the proposals that you see tonight. And after we reviewed those proposals, after some time to evaluate them, we passed our vote. On this particular article, we voted seven zero to recommend the article.
Thank you. Does the Community Preservation Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, I apologize.
The chairperson, Barry Johnson, responds in the affirmative. Is there any discussion on Article Eleven? Please approach the podium, state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm John McDonald from Pecasset.
Thank you, you have the floor. Go ahead.
I think in item number B, this includes funds to do some sort of study for a developer to be able to build housing where the historic Keene House sits in Monument Beach. I could be wrong, I'm just asking about this, and, okay, then, that's no, I'm wrong. This is a very general description here, but... Is there, is that in this funding somehow?
The funding in this article is, the application was filed by the Bourne Housing Authority, and this is for the residences off of Waterhouse Road.
Okay.
Okay, that road runs from Waterhouse Road, you can get out to MacArthur Boulevard, John. Okay, um, but the article you're talking about will be coming up.
Oh, I'll be coming back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rich. Is there any further discussion on this article? Hearing none, we can now move to a vote on Article Eleven. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, you will have thirty seconds to vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and ninety-four in favor and twenty opposed. We're still in the lottery. Article Twelve. Article Twelve on page twenty-eight of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Serunian.
We move that the town vote upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars for the purposes of administrative and operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2025, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance.
Ms. Serunian, you have the floor.
A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would fund the annual operating and administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. A no or a nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the CPC would not have funding to pay expenses related to administration and regular operations. The Select Board voted unanimously five zero zero to recommend approval... The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Rich Lavoy.
The Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Community Preservation Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do.
Chair Barry Johnson responds in the affirmative. I see there is someone waiting at the podium for discussion on Article 12. Please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Jim Linsky, Pecasset.
You have the floor.
Just like a little bit more of an explanation of the administrative and operating expenses of $75,000 for a town committee made up of volunteers. Where's the money going?
I will get, Mr. Johnson, I believe, is going to take the questions for this article.
Thank you.
The purposes of this article is for the CPC administrative and operating expenses, which allowed under Section 6 of Chapter 44B, which is the Community Preservation Act. What this allows the committee to do is to have some administrative assistance, and also because of the Open Space Committee does not have a budget, if a parcel of land comes up and wants to be pursued, then we can authorize an appraisal out of these funds. And these funds come out of the Community Preservation Fund. And this is the one unique article that it is closed out every, at the end of every fiscal year. And that's why we have to appropriate these funds every year. So so far, we have not spent a great deal in this year, and we've had some discussions which we appreciated with a former selectman and resident about how we're going to proceed in the future, and that was a very positive meeting. So I just want to tell you, those funds, that's what they'll be used for, and they're authorized, but they have to be approved by town meeting.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Linsky?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any discussion on this article? Hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 12. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 194 votes in favor and 22 opposed. Article 15. Article 15 on page 31 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation to transfer the sum of $20,000 from free cash.
Second.
You have the floor.
A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion would provide funding to the Human Services Grant Program for FY 2025, consistent with prior years. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the Human Services Grant Program would not have funds to use in FY 2025. For more information about Article 15, please refer to the supporting documentation found in Appendix D on page 109 of the Voter Handbook. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Priscilla Harcourt.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 in favor of recommending this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 15? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 15. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 199 votes in favor and 14 opposed. Article 10. Okay. Article 10 on page 25 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
Yes, we do.
I recognize M.J. Mastrangelo.
Thank you. We move that the town vote upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of $80,000 to fund affordable housing units at Nine Sandwich Road, and to transfer $80,000 from affordable housing reserves.
Thank you. Chair Mastrangelo, you have the floor.
Thank you. This article provides partial funding of engineering and soft costs associated with an affordable housing project to be constructed at Nine Sandwich Road. The project is projected to have 32 rental apartments with 25% of the units affordable and the remainder workforce rental units. The project is listed on the Bourne Housing Production Plan as part of our plan to meet the housing needs of our community. The project has an estimated cost of $13.4 million. As a 40B project, it will need to go through ZBA approval. This is the time for the community to signal support for a project that will provide affordable and workforce rental housing that is desperately needed at a project size that works for Bourne. At the One Cape Conference that I attended last summer, Edward Augustus, who is the Massachusetts Secretary of Housing and Livable Communities, emphasized the importance of towns supporting the cost of housing to make it happen. Sue Ross calls it community buy-in, but it is more than that. In the current environment of high real estate costs and higher interest rates, the economics of affordable housing won't work without help from the Community Preservation Funds and grants. And it is very difficult to get grants for this type of project because it's such a small project, and most of the grant funding is reserved for much larger projects. A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion provides $80,000 of funding for the engineering costs associated with the project as recommended by the Preservation Committee. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion means that the funding would not be provided, and the project would not be able to proceed at this time. The Select Board voted 4 in favor, 0 opposed, with 1 abstention to recommend approval of this article, with a yes vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Rich Lavoy.
Finance Committee voted 5 in favor, 2 opposed, to support this article.
Thank you. Does the Community Preservation Committee have a positive recommendation?
Yes, we do.
He responds in the affirmative. Is there any discussion on Article 10?
Hi, I'm back.
Please state your name again. Thank you.
Jack McDonald from Pecasset.
Thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you. Historic Bourne Village is undergoing a death by a thousand cuts. Street names, the pending probable loss of the historic Keene House. Changes happen, I know, but I want to let you know that this local historian, I'm disturbed by the paving of Historic Bourne Village. In my lifetime, it's going to become unrecognizable. I don't understand, and I'm sure this has come up, how we are being asked to fund a private developer's project. I have no animus against a developer. It's like, you know, you can't get mad at a fish for swimming. This is what developers do. I'm all for public housing. I understand I have children who have struggled with finding housing on Cape Cod. This isn't it, but are we sure that the Keene House is going away? Has that death certificate been signed? I'm not sure about that. I know there are efforts to move it, and if these efforts bear fruit, that would be great. But I see this motion and this idea as just accelerating and pouring fuel on the fire of erasing Historic Bourne Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is there any further discussion? I see you approach the podium, please. Please state your name.
Don Duberger, Pecasset.
You have the floor.
I'd like to agree with Jack McDonald, his thoughts about Historic Bourne Village, and I'm wondering myself, $13 million project, and we have to fund some of the preliminary planning, $80,000 for a private developer? Doesn't seem right to me. Seems to me that somebody's going to be making money off of this project, and it's the developer. So I agree that, I'd like to know who the developer is. Does anybody know that?
Yes.
Chair Mastrangelo, are you going to answer that?
Yes. The application that was filed for Community Preservation Funds is from Vincent McKenzie for the residents at Sandwich Road. He is the owner of that property, and he has to approve ownership of that property. I want to say that this has a lot of history here. So Ms. McKenzie has talked to Bourne Housing Partnership Committee over, more over, over more than a year, and has done conceptual designs, has changed the conceptual design, has tried to work with them in terms of how they want the project to look, what they want the project to provide, and all of that, all of that costs money. And, you know, we've had a couple of projects here in Bourne. The other was, the other project was on Kendall Ray where there was affordable housing for apartments that was proposed for next to Hampton Inn, and they spent a lot of time and a lot of money getting site plan approval with the planning board, and during that time, the interest rate environment changed, and when it got to the time when they finally had their approval, the project didn't work with the numbers anymore. So that, one of the things that Augusta, Edward Augustus, talked about is something they're trying to do in the state that's similar to the Mass Works Grant that we had for the wastewater treatment facility, which is a grant that will, that would help us build something that would help fuel development. What they're talking about now in the state is having a similar kind of program for affordable housing. If you've listened to Mara Healy and the initiatives that she's talked about, we are in a situation in this state where people in the younger ages are leaving, and the people in the older ages that want to downsize can't afford to downsize because it's too, it costs them more than what their current house is. So this is, this is a question for Bourne. If Bourne wants to help participate in bringing housing that can be affordable, not just for the people that are making 80% of AMI, which is the affordable housing, but workforce housing, so the people who work here can live here, and people who want to live here can live here, this is something that the town's going to need to participate in, because if we don't, it's not going to happen. Or you'll end up with the kind of projects that Falmouth has where it's a 300-unit project because that's what works financially. So if you want to have housing that kind of fits in, look at the project on Main Street in Falmouth. Falmouth is putting significant, millions of dollars into from their Community Preservation Funds. So this is a crossroads. This is what do you want Bourne to look like, and who do you want to live here, and how do you want to make our community livable? That's what this is about.
Thank you.
May I continue?
You have two minutes.
So now that I know who the developer is, the town has had a lot of experience with this particular developer, and this particular developer never seems to honor the agreement that we come to. And I could give you several examples. All you have to do is look back the last three, and every single time, he reneged on the agreement. So I don't have confidence. I know the need for affordable housing as well as anybody, and I don't need the lecture. My, I have kids that can't afford to live around here either. But, you know, we have to pick and choose where we spend our money, and I don't think helping a developer out with a $13 million project that he's going to be making money off for the rest of his life. It's not right, especially, it's ironic that it's coming from the Community Preservation Act, because he's done anything but preserve Historic Bourne Village.
Thank you. No applause, please, please. Thank you, thank you. I see some other folks that would like to be heard on this article. I have two on this side, and I have one on this side. This gentleman was before you. You are next, okay? Go ahead, sir. Please state your name.
Thomas Spence from Monument Beach.
Please make sure you speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
A question, it's actually a point of order first. That parking area that behind that house, the Keene House, is that part of the, he uses that for parking for the medical building there?
Yes.
When his site plan was done, was that part of that?
I am not the person to answer that question.
I don't believe that that parking is required for.
There is, in most, when you do any kind of work like that, you have to provide X amount of spaces of parking. If you take that out, you have to go back and revise your site plan.
All right. I think that would be a question for Jen Copeland as to whether the parking that's there, although it is used for employees of the medical center, to make, to make it more, to leave parking closer to the building for people that are going to be using the facility, but I don't believe that that is required for the permit on, on the Five Corners Medical Building. Maybe Jen Copeland can answer that question.
Thank you. I'll recognize Jen Copeland.
Yeah, that's across the screen marked for employee parking or parking for.
Hey, hi there. We're having a town meeting, so we all have to hear that, what you just said over there. You need to speak into the microphone. It's not a sidebar.
What I wanted to find out is the developer taking property from another property that's being used for parking, and that's a violation of the site plan approval, and if that's the case, he has to go back and get it reapproved, correct?
Is that your question, sir?
Yes.
Is she gonna, can she answer that?
I'm sorry.
Chair of the Planning Board?
No longer Chair.
No, you're not Chair. Sorry.
Chris Farrell from the Planning Board. When the medical
When the medical building was first approved, there was a urgent care center downstairs. Part of the site plan at that point, we required extra parking, because as many of you know, if you've been to an urgent care center, there's a lot of cars coming and going all day long. Also, some of the other former tenants in that building are no longer there. Have we actually approved or changed it? I'm not sure. But the parking is no longer needed. Some of the employees do park across at Sandwich Road, but they're not required to. They choose to do that on their own. There was a time when that parking lot was full all the time. It's not so at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Do you have more, sir?
Just with, I'm sorry.
You have to speak into the microphone so we can all hear you.
Sorry about that.
We have the stenographer.
No, I just wanted to make sure that if someone is taking something that was designated for one use and wants to change it for another use, to make sure he's meeting the requirements of the development of that building. If he isn't, then he has to go back to the planning board, correct, sir?
You are correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Microphone, please.
If there is a previous approved use for that particular parking lot, that would have to be amended prior to the construction of this project, if this project goes forward.
Thank you. Are you satisfied?
That's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Sue Ross. I'm chairperson of Bourne Affordable Housing Trust and Partnership. I just wanted to briefly tell you why we did a recommendation for this. We have been trying to get affordable housing in Bourne, as you all know. The state mandates that we do a planned production plan, I mean, a plan, a production plan for affordable housing every five years. We just completed it, and we are, we are supposed to do a certain amount every year. We have not done that. We're supposed to be striving to get to our 10%. We are not near that. This was an opportunity for us to assist on getting a smaller unit. Everything else, because of inflation and what they were talking about, the cost is so much that we can't get developers to come in and do a project that is going to be cost-effective for them and not be huge. And in order to do that and to get a smaller amount, we are trying to get some money together, because he will not, or whoever developer comes in, will not qualify for any grants unless they do like 200 to 300 units. We're trying not to have that. We're trying to have a better look for Bourne Village and for the town. And so to do that, to get the state behind us, they want to see that we, as a town, have some skin in the game, as they call it. And to have some skin in the game, we take CPA funds that are already there and get it just for the design and the beginning. Then it's got to, the whole project has to go in front of the appeals board. It's not a done deal. It's to get a feeling for being able to do affordable housing without having a massive thing over on our side of the bridge or any place in the town of Bourne.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're next.
Thank you. Linda Fletcher, Pecassett. Basically addressed to you, a question was asked and answered. But point of order, we had a gentleman down here trying to speak within his timeframe. He did ask a question. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but was there a need for us to have a dissertation on how this all happened by the select chairman? When this gentleman was trying to present himself, it just seemed to be a point of order that we can't talk over each other, and I'm just trying to make sure that we're all just as polite as you're asking us to be.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. I hope that the gentleman was able to have his questions satisfied. Chairperson Strangelo was offering to answer the question, so I allowed her to go ahead, but that is all that happened. I'm sorry if I wasn't polite enough about it. I will try better, but thank you for that feedback. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this article? I recognize Elmer Clegg.
Elmer Clegg, Pecassett. I want to echo what that lady just said, that what upset me was when you turned back to the speaker at the microphone and said, "Now you have two more minutes," when the chair of the select board was given what seemed to be an unlimited amount of time.
So when, we have people on stage answering questions. I am going to allow them to go ahead and speak about it. I'm sorry that I don't time the speakers on the stage. Sorry that wasn't clear to you. Mr. DuBurger was allowed to finish his entire time. Everyone has three and a half minutes, Mr. Clegg, but thank you so much for speaking to that.
It just seemed to me, at least, that what we heard from the stage was not clarifying anything that Mr. DuBurger had asked, but that's, we'll go on. I have a question about the numbers that were stated earlier. I understand there's 32 units in this building, which is going to be constructed on a one-acre residential lot, by the way. Could you tell us again, what is the mix of affordable units in that, of that 32?
I'm reading from the application that was filed with the Community Preservation Committee. The proposed building will be a three-story L-shaped building that is appropriately, approximately 30,000 square feet in area, eight units or 25% will be affordable to households earning up to 80%. Affordable, I'll start again. The proposed building will be a three-story L-shaped building that is approximately 30,000 square feet in area, eight units or 25% will be affordable to households earning up to 80% of the area median income in accordance with applicable state regulations and guidelines. The remaining units will be market rate units.
So this building is not totally affordable housing?
No, it isn't.
Only 25% of the units in the building will be affordable, and the rest will be market rate. So back on the point about why are we funding something where a private developer is going to accrue the benefit of profits from those rentals for that period of time? I could vote in favor of this if the entire building was affordable, but with only 25% of the units being affordable, it doesn't meet my standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
May I make a point, Madam Moderator?
Yes, you may.
One of the things, one of the reasons I believe that Housing Partnership was also in favor of it, when it is rental units, all of the units count towards our SHI, which is the tabulation that the state has for determining whether we're meeting our 10% affordable to be no longer under 40B. So because they're rental units, all of the units will count towards the SHI.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Julie Keane, Sagamore Beach. So my thing is this, we're going to spend $80,000 of CPA funds. I'm all for affordable housing. However, if we're going to spend the $80,000 for this, and we're doing it because you want skin in the game, as she quoted to say, shouldn't we, the town, be getting some money back from our $80,000 investment for these units? If we're only going to have 20, what, 25%, that's supposed to be our money back? We'll never see that. That's not right. We should put money into affordable housing where we, the town, can have say as to what happens, not into private pockets. I'm not standing for private pocket funding. Otherwise, we open the floodgates to everybody that wants to come in and take our CPA funds that we, build that trust fund up for all kinds of different things here in the town. I don't agree with it, and I'm not going to vote this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keane. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard on Article 10? I recognize Ms. Ross again.
I just wanted to say what MJ just said, is when we do affordable housing and it's a rental, we count all the units. And again, remember that anybody that comes in for a 40B, it's very hard, if you're not working with different entities for affordable housing, to get it denied, because if it's denied, they go to the housing in, at the state, and, and we don't have our 10%. So this is just a way to do it, you know, with not 3,000 units. It's a way to do it, even though it may not seem like it, it's a way to do it in a small sense. Also, 25% are affordable, but then we're going to have workforce, and if anybody has somebody that, a couple or something, they both work, but they still can't afford to own a house, and they can't afford some of the rents, workforce housing is the answer. And we have none of that in this town. So not only is it affordable, which is 80% below the median income, but some of it, it'll probably be between 80 and 120%, which is workforce housing. So again, I know it's hard to believe that helping a developer is the right way to go with our town's money, but it is the only way that we're going to be able to have small units get to our 10%, so we have some control over it for our town.
Thank you.
Catherine Walton, Monument Beach, and also a member of the Bourne Planning Board.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I, first of all, like to say thank you to the developer, because this is a huge undertaking, and we need more developers in this town to build housing. And I understand it's unfortunate that it's in a historic district for some folks, but this town has spent so much money moving buildings. We need to have money and we need to build housing for people that live here. If you look at the people that go over the bridge, it is, it is, it is so unfair. So I ask that you vote for this, and we do this in a thoughtful, a thoughtful process, as you've heard from everybody else. We're not building a 200 building like other towns are. This is a very thoughtful, laid-out process. So regardless of what your thoughts are for the developer, I ask that you vote for this because we need this for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this article? Hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 10. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld device, you will be able to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You will have 30 seconds. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has failed. 94 in favor, 121 in opposition. Article 23. Article 23 on page 40 of your handbook is a zoning article, and therefore requires a two-thirds supermajority vote. Does the planning board have a motion on Article 23? Thank you. I will recognize Vice Chair Liz Brown of the planning board. You may state your motion.
Sorry, I have to sort through my papers.
Take a minute.
All right. Madam Moderator, we move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
You have the floor.
Thank you. The planning board conducted a public hearing on March 6, 2024, to review amendments to the Bourne zoning bylaw, Section 3343 interim egress control, by deleting until June 1, 2020, or if earlier. This article would remove the expired sunset date from the interim egress control section. The purposes of this section is to aid in reducing the impacts of new access points on Scenic Highway and Sandwich Road until the opening of a limited access highway connecting Route 6 with MacArthur Boulevard or Route 25. Both Scenic Highway and Sandwich Road are impacted significantly by traffic, and new access points should be limited. This section was originally adopted in 1996 with an original expiration date of 2006 and extended to 2020. The planning board voted unanimously, 5 to 0, to recommend approval of this article. A yes vote in favor of the motion would amend the zoning bylaw to make this change. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo until the zoning, and the zoning bylaw would not change.
Thank you. Does the select board have a recommendation on this article?
We do.
I recognize Ann Marie Sarunian.
The select board voted unanimously, 500, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we do.
I recognize Kathy Legacey.
The finance committee voted to recommend approval of this article. Seven in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstaining.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 23? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article 23. This vote requires a two-thirds supermajority vote. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the planning board has passed with 183 votes in favor and 15 opposed. Article 6. Article 6 on page 21 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Jared McDonald.
We move that the town vote to hear reports and recommendations of committees and state or town officers.
Mr. McDonald, you have the floor.
A yes or a i vote in favor of the motion would allow communities to address the town meeting and provide an update on their work, whether it be town committees, state or town officers. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would allow, would not allow the committees or representatives to provide a report to the town meeting. Select board voted unanimously, 500, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Priscilla Harcourt.
The finance committee voted unanimously to recommend this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 6? Hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 6. This vote requires a simple majority vote. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to cast your votes. Please use green for s, yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has passed with 183 votes in favor and 15 with 180 in favor and 17 in opposition. Are there any committees that are going to be making reports this evening? I recognize Wayne Sampson.
Good evening, town officials and residents. My name is Wayne Sampson. I'm the chairperson of the Southside Fire Station Building Committee. Since our last report to you at the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, the town has publicly advertised on two separate occasions for requests for proposals for land, for available land that meets necessary requirements of siting a southside fire station. The town did enter into negotiations with one property owner, however, they failed to come to a conclusion. On the second RFP, we received only one proposal, and it was outside the recommended response area. To date, we have reviewed over 20 locations within the recommended response area, and after review, we made the difficult decision to recommend to the Select Board to allow the town administrator to research the possibility of siting the station on town-owned conservation land on Shore Road. This process is difficult and controlled by Massachusetts general law, and it can be very time-consuming. We respect the town's commitment to land conservation. We recognize the legitimate concerns of residents, neighbors, and community organizations that have proposed legitimate questions regarding our recommendation. Within the limits of our public charter, we pledge to work with our public and private partners to research your questions and provide responses. For over five years, the town of Bourne has had two separate committees searching for an appropriate site to locate a critical public safety fire station. We ask for your understanding and your support in completing this task. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other committee that would like to make a report this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the next article in the lottery. Article 27. Article 27 on page 50 of your handbook requires a majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Jared McDonald.
We move to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation as set forth below. An act authorizing the Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance to grant certain easements to the town of Bourne, whereas the deferred operation of this act would tend to default, defeat its purpose, which is to authorize forthwith the conveyance of certain easements by the Commonwealth to the town of Bourne. Therefore, it is hereby declared to be an emergency law necessary for the immediate preservation of the public convenience. Be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled, and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1, notwithstanding Sections 32 to 37 inclusive of Chapter 7(c) of the general laws or any general or specific law to the contrary, the Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, in consultation with the Adjutant General, may convey to the town of Bourne permanent and temporary easements in lands of the Commonwealth used for armory purposes located on Armory Road in the town of Bourne and shown on a plan on file with the clerk of the town of Bourne entitled Proposed Utility Easement Plan in Bourne, Mass., prepared for the town of Bourne, Number 31, Armory Road, MAP 19.4, Parcel 181, dated October 15, 2018, and prepared by Bracken Engineering, Inc. The exact boundaries of the easement areas shall be determined by the Commissioner based upon a survey. The easements shall be granted solely for the purposes of installation, use, maintenance, repair, and replacement of subsurface water line. The grant of the easements shall be subject to Sections 2 to 4 inclusive, and such additional terms and conditions as the Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, in consultation with the Adjutant General, may reasonably require, consistent with this act. Section 2, the town of Bourne shall assume all costs associated with the engineering surveys, appraisals, deed preparation, and other expenses necessary to execute the conveyance authorized in this act. Section 3, an independent appraisal of the fair market value and value in use of the easements described in Section 1 shall be prepared in accordance with the usual and customary professional appraisal practices by a qualified appraiser commissioned by the Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. Consideration for the grants of the easements pursuant to Section 1 shall be the full and fair market value or the value in proposed use, whichever is greater, as determined by the Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. The Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance shall submit the appraisal to the Inspector General for review and comment. The Inspector General shall review and approve the appraisal, and the review shall include an examination of the methodology utilized for the appraisal. The Inspector General shall prepare a report of such review and file the report with the Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. After receiving the report, the Commissioner shall submit copies of the report to the House and Senate Committees on Ways and Means and the Joint Committee on State Administration Regulatory Oversight at least 15 days prior to the execution of documents affecting the conveyances authorized in said Section 1. Section 4. No instrument executed pursuant to this act shall be valid unless it provides that the easements shall be used solely for the purposes described in Section 1. The instruments authorized in said Section 1 shall include a reversionary clause that stipulates the easements shall terminate upon such terms and conditions as the Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance may determine. If the property ceases to be used for the purposes authorized in this act prior to any reversion, the Commissioner shall provide notice of any violations to the town of Bourne, and the town may cure the violation to the satisfaction of the division. If any interest reverts to the Commonwealth, any further disposition shall be subject to Section 34 to 37 inclusive of Chapter 7(c) of general laws and prior approval of the General Court.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, you have the floor.
This will, this vote will authorize the Select Board, on its behalf, to petition the General Court for passage of the special law authorizing the Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, in consultation with the Adjutant General, to convey the town a permanent easement on land under the care and custody of the Massachusetts Armory Commission and identified on Bourne Assessors' Map as Parcel 181 on MAP 19.4 and referenced at Barnstable County Registry of Deeds at Book 877, Pages 67 and 68, for the purpose of replacing a subsurface municipal water line and all accessory supporting apertures, and consistent with the terms of the temporary license originally granted in January of 2019, and further to authorize town officials to take any action in relation thereto. A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion would allow the town to file special legislation to acquire a utility easement for the Commonwealth to serve the newly constructed police station. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the town could not seek the necessary easement for the state. For more information about the Article 27, refer to the supporting documentation found in Appendix D of the voter handbook. The Select Board voted unanimously, 500, to recommend.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, 700, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 27? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article 27. This vote requires a majority vote. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to vote. When I tell you you can press green for yes or red for no, you may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 187 votes in favor and 7 opposed. Article 22. Article 22 on page 39 of your handbook is a zoning article, and therefore requires a two-thirds supermajority vote. Does the Planning Board have a positive motion on Article 22? Thank you. I recognize Planning Board Vice Chair Liz Brown. Please state your motion.
I will.
Thank you.
All right. Just want to make sure I'm reading the correct one.
Appreciate that.
Uh huh. Okay. The Planning Board conducted a public hearing on March 6, 2024, to review proposed amendments to the Bourne zoning bylaw, Section 1242.1, deleting the word "two"
Liz, that's not the, I think that's the explanation, not the motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
You can tell I don't do this all the time.
You're doing great.
I know. We move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
You have the floor.
Ah, here we go. The Planning Board conducted a public hearing on March 6, 2024, to review proposed amendments to the Bourne zoning bylaw, Section 1242.1 enforcement, by deleting the word "two" and replacing it with "three." And why? Under the current zoning bylaw, a special permit lapses within two years if substantial completion of the project has not taken place. This article would change from a two-year to a three-year timeframe for consistency with Chapter 40a of the Zoning Act. The Planning Board voted unanimously, 5 to 0, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Select Board have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Jared McDonald.
A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion would amend the zoning bylaw to make this change. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo, and the bylaw would not change. The Select Board voted unanimously, 500, to recommend approval of the article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we do.
I recognize Kathy Legacey.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, seven in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstaining to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 22? Seeing none, we may move to a vote on Article 22. This vote requires a two-thirds supermajority. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Planning Board has passed with 173 votes in favor and 16 opposed. Article 17. Article 17 on page 33 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article 17?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Jared McDonald.
We move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, you have the floor.
This vote is to authorize the town to amend Town of Bourne bylaws by deleting references to 31 days and replacing the same with 30 days. Wherever said 31 days appears in the following sections of the bylaws. Section 2.27, 2.9.1, 3.1.17, 3.1.24, 3.1.43, 3.14.3, 3.15.1, and 3.15.9, and 8.1.6. A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion would correct 11 instances of Scrivener's errors in the general bylaw. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo and not correct the errors. The Select Board voted unanimously, 500, to recommend.
Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Carla Emmons.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, 7 to 0, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 17? Seeing and hearing none, we may move to a vote on Article 17. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to cast your votes. Using the green button for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 179 in favor and 6 opposed. Article 28. Article 28 is on page 53 of your handbook, and it requires a majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti. We move to authorize the Select Board to convey an easement in a portion of land under or near Worcester Ave, approximately 262 square feet or less or more, as more specifically described in the plan a filed with the town clerk's office titled Exhibit A: Plan Sewage Disposal System Easement in Bourne, Mass., prepared for Town of Bourne Monument Avenue, prepared by Bracken Engineering, Inc., and dated March 21, 2024. Said easement to be used for sewage disposal system for the benefit of the parcel known and numbered as One Monument Ave, upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board may deem to be in the town's best interests.
Ms. Ferretti, you have the floor.
A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion would allow the Select Board to grant an easement to the homeowner so they could build a portion of their septic system in the public road layout. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the homeowner could not use any are located within the public road layout to construct a new septic system. For more information on Article 28, please refer to the supporting documentation found in Appendix D. The Select Board voted unanimously, 500, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, 700, to recommend approval of this article.
this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-eight? I see you.
Good evening, Mrs. Moderator. My name is Mark Emmons, Monument Beach. I'm also a resident on Worcester Avenue. I'm a professional engineer registered in the Commonwealth, and this easement would certainly benefit the removal and reduction of pollution for Finney's Harbor, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on Article twenty-eight? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article twenty-eight. This vote requires a majority. Using your handheld devices, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and seventy-eight votes in favor and ten opposed. Article sixteen. Article sixteen on page thirty-two of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. I recognize Anne Marie Serunian.
We move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
You have the floor.
This committee has experienced quorum issues and has asked for a reduction in membership so that the committee can meet with a quorum of members. We're in a bit of a quorum quandary. Seven members exist on this committee when it was first introduced, expanded to eleven in 2003, creating a quorum of six to function. One of the state requires not only a minimum of five members, however, any member cannot serve more than two consecutive years. Because of the way the terms expire and the current number of the members at six, with terms expiring and an inability to serve again, this committee has been unable to function. Meeting the state minimum of members at five would allow this committee to function and accomplish its mission to promote excellence, access, education, and diversity in the arts, humanities, and interpretive science, to improve quality of life and contribute to the economic vitality of our community. A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion would reduce the number of members on the cultural council. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo. The Select Board voted unanimously five-zero-zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Tom Joyce.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article sixteen?
If I may, Madam Moderator.
You may.
Just a fun fact. The Mass Cultural Council was established in nineteen eighty, and in order to fund this, it was an arts lottery. The ticket was five dollars, and the first jackpot was a two-hundred-thousand-dollar payout. Two years later, they reintroduced the lottery, and it's now known as MegaBucks. So, tonight, if we get out in time, go buy a MegaBucks ticket. You might not get a payout, but it's still going to be a win-win for Bourne.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on Article sixteen? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article sixteen. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and seventy-six votes in favor and twelve opposed. Article twenty-five. Article twenty-five on page forty-three of your handbook is a zoning article and therefore requires a two-thirds supermajority vote. Does the Planning Board have a positive motion on Article twenty-five?
Yes, we do, Madam Sec- Madam Moderator.
I recognize Planning Board Member John Dugan. Please state your motion.
We move that the town vote to approve the article as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
You have the floor.
In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Paragraph Five, the Planning Board conducted a public hearing on March sixth, 2024, to review amendments to the following sections of the Zone- the Bourne zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings: Section twenty-two-twenty, Use Regulation Schedule; Section twenty-eight-twenty-one, Downtown District Table of Allowable Uses, Table DTD-Dash-One; Section twenty-eight-fifty-three, Table of Required Parking Spaces, Table DTD-Dash-Three; Section forty-one-twenty through forty-one-twenty-three, Accessory Dwelling, and Section Five, Definitions. The Planning Board voted unanimously five to zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Select Board have a recommendation on this article?
We do.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
One of the zoning strategies identified in the Town of Bourne Local Comprehensive PIN and Housing Production Plan is to revise the current accessory dwelling bylaw and encourage the creation of in-law and/or year-round accessory dwellings that can provide significant year-round zone- round housing opportunities for residents. An accessory dwelling unit, ADU, is a separate unit within an owner-occupied home, typically as part of the- of a surplus space in a single-family home. ADUs are separate from the principal dwelling and have their own kitchen, bathrooms, and living facilities. A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion would amend the zoning bylaw. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo, and the zoning bylaw would not be changed. For more information about Article twenty-five, please refer to supporting documentation found in Appendix D on page one-fifteen of the voter handbook. The Select Board voted unanimously five-zero-zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we do.
I recognize Kathy Legace.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously seven in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstaining in favor of this article.
Thank you. Would anyone-
If I may-
You may go ahead.
Just a few comments on the accessory dwelling unit zoning amendments. This is another way for us to create additional forms of housing in the Town of Bourne. It promotes a more cost-effective housing due to the smaller unit size, which is limited to fifty percent of the existing dwelling space. We also took into consideration the effort to- to create long-term housing. We have a ninety-day minimum lease in this zoning amendment. It's intended to discourage any short-term, but to allow for seasonal workforce and maybe traveling healthcare workers. The ability for seniors to stay in their homes and to stay in town, the multi-general housing that has become very common these days would also benefit from this, and it does squarely put the creation of additional affordable housing in the residents' hands and homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard on Article twenty-five? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article twenty-five. This vote requires a two-thirds supermajority. Using your handheld devices, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Planning Board has passed with one hundred and sixty-seven in favor and twenty-one opposed. The next article is Article seven. Article seven is on page twenty-two of your handbook and requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article seven?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town vote, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the outdoor recreation feasibility study and to transfer one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from open space slash recreation reserves.
Second.
You have the floor.
Addressing the top FY twenty-five priority with the Recreation Committee's facility needs assessment, Article seven proposes allocating existing available CPC funding towards a comprehensive strategic long-term planning opportunity by collectively determining the optimal use for a- for Chester, Clark, Keith, and Pocasset recreational areas through community input, inclusivity considerations, and maintaining future-evolving recreation needs over the next twenty-plus years. A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion provides funding for the proposed project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, and no or nay vote opposed to the motion means that the funding would not be provided and the project cannot proceed at this time. The Select Board voted unanimously five-zero-zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Rich Lavoy.
Finance Committee voted seven to zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article seven? I see you, Mr. Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Stephen Mealy from Sagamore Beach. I think such a feasibility study would be worthwhile for the town. Our parks are large and well-used, and improvements would be well-received, I'm sure. I just have several questions about how the funds of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars are going to be utilized. Is there a project manager that is going to be assigned, or is this going to be run from- with internal leadership from the town?
The Assistant Town Administrator is going to answer that question.
Thank you.
Or the Town Administrator.
So, the feasibility study will be taken care of in-house with the Recreation Director and my office working with the Recreation Committee.
Thank you. Are we going to be using a consultant that may contribute to the assist in the preparation for bid documents as a result of the study?
Yes.
Thank you. What's the timeline for completion of the study? Is it a year?
I hope it doesn't take a year, but it'll- we will work with the Recreation Committee and work at their pace.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Would you like to be heard on this? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alice Howe, and I'm from Pocasset, and I'm a member of the Recreation Committee. And it- I have to thank everyone here at the last town meeting who voted in favor of a hard-court project to rehab tennis, pickleball, and basketball courts in town, and that's fabulous. That is getting underway in June, and- but that project will only keep- well, will only help to keep the courts and basketball, tennis, and pickleball for two to four years, and then we have to look as a committee with the town to look at ways that we can improve and what use we have for some of the areas, Clark, Pocasset, Keith, and Chester. Chester wasn't one of the areas that was included in the hard-court project because it can't be rehabbed. Those courts there, tennis as well as pickleball, are built on sand, and so we would be wasting money by rehabbing those courts. So, we do need to look at how we can improve our offerings for the town, and this project is very- is needed to follow the hard-court project. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on Article seven? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article seven. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld device, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Please use green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and forty-two votes in favor, fourteen opposed. Article twenty. Article twenty on page thirty-seven of your voter handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Serunian.
We move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Ms. Serunian, you have the floor.
This is a housekeeping article. Bino was authorized by a ballot vote in nineteen seventy-five. The town was supposed to reauthorize Bino four years later in nineteen seventy-nine. However, that did not happen. Town Hall discovered this oversight recently as a group requested a Bino license, and Town Hall, in wanting to ensure the correct process, could not find a record of the reauthorization vote. Lucky for Bourne, the law has since changed, and authorization only requires a town meeting vote, Mass. General Law, Chapter Ten, Section Thirty-seven through forty. A yes or a I vote in favor of the motion would allow the Select Board to issue loco Bino bingo licenses. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the Select Board would not be able to issue a loco Bino bingo licenses. The Select Board voted unanimously unanimously five-zero-zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Carla Emmons.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously seven-zero-zero to approve this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, we may move to a vote on Article twenty. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld device, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and thirty votes in favor and eight opposed. Article twenty-four. Article 24 on page forty-two of your handbook is a zoning article and therefore requires a two-thirds supermajority vote. Does the Planning Board have a motion on Article 24?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Liz Brown again. Please state your motion.
We move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
I second that motion.
You have the floor, Ms. Brown.
The Planning Board conducted a public hearing on March 6th, 2024 to review amendments to the Born zoning bylaw, Section 2821 Downtown District Table of allowable uses, DTD-1. Functional standards and special permit criteria for home occupation office use by, we want to delete the reference 4120 in its entirety and replace with 4110. This is a housekeeping issue. The home occupation is listed as a use in the downtown district. The functional standards and special permit criteria for the home occupation had an incorrect reference for the home occupation as 4120 and we want to correct that to 4110. The Planning Board voted unanimously five to zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Select Board have a recommendation on this article?
We do.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
Home occupation is listed as a use in the downtown district. The functional standards and special permit criteria for the home occupation had an incorrect section reference for the home occupation as 4120. However, the correct section is 4110. A yes or a i vote in favor of the motion would amend the zoning bylaw. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo and the zoning bylaw would not change. For more information about Article 24, please refer to supporting documentation found in Appendix D. Again, the Select Board voted unanimously five-zero-zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we do.
I recognize Kathy Legacy.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously seven in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstaining to approve this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 24? Seeing none, we may move to a vote on Article 24. This vote requires a two-thirds supermajority. Using your handheld devices, you will have thirty seconds to cast your votes. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and thirty-two votes in favor, I mean, I'm sorry, the Planning Board has passed with one hundred and thirty-two votes in favor and five in opposition.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I make a motion that if we are not able to finish the business by ten o'clock, we extend the time of town meeting.
Thank you for that motion. I have a second. We have a motion and a second to extend this meeting past ten o'clock should we need that time. Is there any discussion on this motion? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor of extending the meeting past ten PM, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition, please say no. I declare that MJ's motion has passed unanimously and we will continue this meeting until we finish. Article 26. Article 26 on page forty-eight of your handbook requires a majority vote. Does the Select Board have a recommendation on this article?
We do not have a positive motion on this article.
Thank you, MJ. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do not.
Is there a positive motion for Article 26 from the floor? Hearing none, I will ask the Select Board to make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article.
We move that the town indefinitely postpone Article 26.
Second.
MJ, you're at the floor.
Thank you. Phase one of the board rail trail requires temporary easements during the twenty-four month construction period from three private landowners during construction of the shared use path. The town is also seeking to enter into agreements with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the United States Army Corps of Engineers for permanent and temporary easements. There are a few final outstanding items to be resolved. More time is necessary to gather the information and the recommendation is to defer consideration of this article to the special town meeting in the fall. And yes or a i vote in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone the article would mean that the town will not pursue acquiring the easements now and will come back at the fall special town meeting with more information. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion to indefinitely postpone would require another motion to be made on Article 26 to discuss and vote on acquiring the easements at this time. The Select Board voted unanimously five-zero-zero to recommend indefinite postponement of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously seven-zero-zero to recommend indefinite postponement of this article.
Thank you. I see that there is possibly someone that wants to be heard on this article. You may, please state your name for the record.
Robin McIntyre, Born Village. This is perhaps more of a point of information. If between now and the fall, someone has questions on this article, who should they most be directed to?
That is a good question.
Thank you. There is a pedestrian and bike path committee that meets generally monthly. The meetings are posted there, like at Wednesdays at six o'clock, so they can be asked. Tim Lyden in our engineering department is the staff member who coordinates a lot of that. And there will be a public information, we're planning a public information meeting as well.
Does that answer? Okay. Would you like to be heard on this article?
Briefly. David McPherson, I'm chairman of the Advisory Committee on the Project. And yes, it's our committee's plan to be holding a public information session sometime soon in the coming month or two.
Thank you so much. Is there any further discussion on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 26? Hearing none, we may move to a vote on this motion to indefinitely postpone. Using your handheld device, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote. This vote requires a simple majority. Green for yes to indefinitely postpone, red to not postpone it. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with one hundred and thirty-one in favor, six opposed. Article nine. Article nine on page twenty-four of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Oh, thank you. I recognize Jared McDonald.
We move that the town vote upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to fund roof repairs at the Anna's Pals Beach House for immunocompromised children, formerly the Hoxie Schoolhouse, and to transfer one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from Historic Preservation Reserves.
Second.
Mr. McDonald, you're at the floor.
Upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate sum of money to fund roof repairs for the Anna's Pals Beach House for immunocompromised children, formerly the high school, or Hoxie School, and to meet said appropriation to transfer from available funds or reserve from the FY 2025 estimated Community Preservation Fund reserves revenues, a sum of money for the purposes of this article. A yes or a i vote in favor of the motion provides funding for the proposed project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion means that the funding would not be provided and the project cannot proceed at this time. The Select Board voted unanimously five-zero-zero to recommend approval of the article.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Rich Lavoy.
Finance Committee voted four in favor, one opposed, and one abstention.
Thank you. Does the Community Preservation Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do.
Chair Barry Johnson responds in the affirmative. I see that there are a couple people that would like to be heard on Article nine. Mr. Mealy, he's going to go first because you already spoke tonight. Is that okay with you? Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Paul Ferrari from South Sagamore. And Madam Moderator, I appreciate your professionalism and you doing a bang-up job.
Thank you.
So, I look at this and I think it's a very honorable thing what this nonprofit is. It's fantastic and I'm an alumni at Hoxie, so it's sentimental. But when I think about Community Preservation Funds and Historical Funds, I think of what can benefit the entire community. Here we have a nonprofit that per of the January article of Born Enterprise, they, the town had sold that property to a nonprofit for a thousand dollars. And now they're coming back and they want historical preservation funds to fix their roof. We're not all going to benefit from that and I don't think it's appropriate for us to be subsidizing their nonprofit situation at this time. So, I'm voting no to be giving them the money to fix their roof.
Thank you. Mr. Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Stephen Mealy from Sagamore Beach. Let's recall back of March of 2011 when a group of Born residents led by Allison Beizar Knox of Sagamore submitted a plan to request the town of Born to maintain a century-old building, the Ella F. Hoxie Elementary School, as a community arts and science center. In 2011, the then-building inspector, Mr. Laporte, and the plumbing inspector, Mr. Trebo, also listed several numerous and structural flaws and safety hazards at the building at that time. There was inadequate handicapped accessibility in the building. There's no working sprinkler system. Much of the woodwork is coated with leaded paint and the ceiling has a windowless basement that was completely covered with asbestos. That was thirteen years ago. Flash forward to this evening where it'd be reenasked again to provide an investment to make the repairs on the same building again. Hoxie's been closed since 2009. The previous attempt to reuse the building resulted in tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer dollars being invested in repairs that led to the downfall of the Hoxie Center at Sagamore Beach for art, science, and education and culture, even after investing CPC money. The failure was a result of the inability of the nonprofit at that time to raise much-needed funds to complete the restoration. Tonight, we face the same question of not only the town giving the real estate to another nonprofit, but being asked a second time to assist with taxpayer funds for needed repairs. So, I have several questions I'd like to put forward. I believe that Anna's Pals would be an asset for the town if successful in rehabilitating this building. You never know if one of our children or residents may be using this building at some time in the future. It would add to the services that we provide, not only to our town, but to others. So, to be sure that we are successful about this, can we be sure that Anna's Pals will be successful? Did Born Leadership do its due diligence to make sure that Anna's Pals not only has enough money to put a roof on this building, to probably to renovate it for several million dollars to bring it up to a position where it could be inhabited by individuals that have issues that they have and overcome all of the lacking that was noted in a review that was taking place over thirteen years ago?
Thank you.
Did we ask the question, does Anna's Pals have the money to finish the project? Or do they have the means to raise the money to finish the project? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Do you want to answer that or do you want me to go for it?
Madam Mar, Margaret.
Would you like to speak on this, Mr. Johnson?
Barry Johnson's going to answer your question, so I'm going to bring him the microphone.
On behalf of the committee, I will speak on this, but I'm going to respectfully ask the moderator, Anna's Pals representatives are here this evening and that they be allowed to address the body, to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I was notified of this possibility in writing prior to this meeting, so I will allow anyone who has presented themselves from Anna's Pals to answer Mr. Mealy's question. Is someone here today? I'm expecting and have approved Christina Jerome, the founder and president of Anna's Pals. Thank you. Would you please state your name and the town you live in for the record, please?
I'm Christina Jerome from Boston, Massachusetts. Thank you. Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. We founded Anna's Pals in memory of my daughter who we lost to leukemia. And this was not my life plan. This was not my goal when I was growing up and wasn't my future until this happened to my family and I found a need that needed to be met. There was a void in the care for these kids. And we spent years and years searching for the perfect property. We were driving around in the beautiful town of Sagamore and we stumbled across the Hoxie School. And what a beautiful building. And from that moment, we thought this was the perfect place to provide this sanctuary for these children. To answer some of your questions, sir. We are a fairly new nonprofit. We certainly have the money to pay for the roof now, but we would not, we don't want to drain all of our funds right now or in this process. The historic preservation document that we received stated that the roof was in severe condition. The town already knew that it was in need of renovations to save this building. If we don't repair this roof now, there won't be a building to save. And it was my understanding, because it was historic preservation, that we could get some assistance from you all to make that happen. Moving forward, we have been talking with some philanthropists in the Boston area. We have hired, retained a professional fundraiser and we have started our five million dollar Born With A Knee to Make a Difference campaign to help raise funds, to make this a safe retreat for these children and to be able to maintain the property and keep it maintained and restore it to its original beauty. And to the gentleman who spoke about, you know, it not being viable for the town, it is our hope that we will bring in families who will, you know, purchase local goods, shop at local markets, and support local businesses while they're here. So, we do hope that we are able to, you know, be a benefit to this community and work together, you and us, creating this escape for these kids. And we want to be good neighbors. That's our goal. Provide this destination, be good neighbors, and work together to, to help these families in need.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Moderator?
Yes. Mr. McDonald, there you are.
From a town standpoint, I'd just like to remind people that it is still a town building. And if we allow it to come into complete disrepair, it no longer becomes an asset for the town. The other part of that is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, they have to meet certain fundraising goals in order to be able to use this property. So, I believe if they are exasperating their funds now, that would make it more difficult for them to meet those fundraising goals to fulfill this contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Mealy, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a tough decision for this town, having seen the history of this particular building with fundraisers, but I would ask you this evening to give it serious consideration to support the project one more time. I recognize the difficulties for us as a town, but I also recognize the fact that the building, as the member of the Select Board just pointed out, if we don't do anything, the building will probably deteriorate to the point where it must be torn down. And I don't think any of us want that. So, I would ask you all to make the investment one more time and allow Anna's Pals to show us exactly what they can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Does anyone else want to speak on this article? Does anyone else wanna speak on this article? All right, I will allow it. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name's Susan Barracini from Pocasset. I have great reservations about supporting this project. The mission is undoubtedly fabulous. The headaches that lie within this building that we don't know about really are unknown. And so I would have rather seen the town do, use this property to make affordable housing there long ago. I just can't in good faith, knowing, having been in that building when it was a school, knowing the hassles that we encountered already. I wish you all the best with a project, but the monies that are gonna have to be funneled into that project are insurmountable. So I just don't, we don't even know what their future funding sources are. Are they gonna come back when the asbestos in the basement is too great and it just starts to crumble? That was the cafeteria, so who knows what extra mold is in there? That's all I'm gonna say. I just, I have too many reservations to support this. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking up. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Hi, Jack McDonald from Pocasset. Just wanna remind the town meeting that their neighbor, the Swift Memorial Church, came before this body about ten years ago requesting funds to rehab there and replace their slate roof. And by golly, we did it. We funded it. They did their new roof. And granted, the church isn't for everybody. Some people never darken the doors of a church, but it helped preserve a historic building, their neighbor, and the community benefits, I believe, in general from this sort of funding. Please vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this article? I see you.
Hi, Judy Froman.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I also have reservations about this. We have, we give the eighty thousand and we, it is uncovered that there are a lot of other things and a lot of other expenses. There is the situation where if the, if the project doesn't move forward, then it does come back to the town. Then we have demolition. Then we have, or we have, you know, to come up with a whole new concept for it. So I think it's based on some speculation and I don't think that it is necessarily going to benefit the town. And I feel like the community preservation is supposed to benefit the whole town. So I think there are some other ways that we could be spending our funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, Mr. Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We've done this before. We took Cody several years ago, and it is now a housing unit for seniors. When I inspected that as a Select Board member at that time, it was over a foot of water in the basement. God help us. We can do this, folks. We can do this. There's a lot of reservation about trying to save something that's old, but I think this time we should give it that extra push. Thank you.
Andrew Cooney, Monument Beach. I'm a member of the CPC as well as the Open Space Committee. I just wanted to share with the town meeting tonight that, just to remind everyone that, you know, these funds are specifically set aside, some of the funds, for historical preservation. And that's what this request is for. If the folks in Sagamore especially wanna see this building preserved, then this is something that we should support as a community. This is our only shot. This, this building will deteriorate much, much more, much quicker, much more quickly if we don't at least get the roof, you know, in good shape. You know, we have had some discussions with the, well, during the presentation by the proponents of the project, we did highlight the potential that there is, you know, certainly asbestos and lead in there and that they are going to make sure they do the proper assessment for that and prepare themselves for that. And, you know, this, this is, this is a decision we have to make if we wanna preserve, use these funds. These funds are specifically set aside for historical preservation. If we wanna support that, then that's what we should do.
Thank you. Would anyone like, else like to be heard on Article Nine? Yes.
I'm Leona Bombachi from Pocasset. I was one of the members of the Hoxie nonprofit group and we tried to make it an arts-cultural center. And of course, we ran into a lot of challenges to continue with that. But I think the major difference here is the fact that, as that gentleman said earlier, that our mission was to provide a cultural arts center for the town of Bourne. And we ran into many challenges. We actually put in a lot of sweat labor in fixing that building up. We had no access to the interior because we had all these building code restrictions, as Mr. Mealy mentioned, about the sprinkler system and all the work that building needs. So all I can say is that if, in fact, we wanna go forward and support repairing the roof, and I have no reservations, I mean, I totally support the preservation of the building as a historical building. I just wanna know that the town, if this group, this nonprofit group, that's coming forward to wanna make this program they wanna do, if for some reason they can't continue or become successful and we put in the money for this roof, that we will continue to support that building.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Leona. You can finish. Okay. Does anyone else have any new information to add to the debate on Article Nine? All right, I'm going to allow it, Barry. Can you approach the podium, please?
Thank you.
My name is David Sampson. I've been in this community for about forty years. A lot of it was spent at the Upper Cape Tech School. I know a little bit about buildings. And I know something about this building. Not a lot, but I know some. And I noticed that this is not a knockdown building. The building is basically structurally sound. I went, last went into this building on behalf of the Kelly Foundation, who had given some grant money to the then custodian of the building, because it's passed hands a little bit. And I went through this building a bit. A lot of work has been done. And I'm sure a lot of work needs to be done. But I'm not ready to give up on this building. I think that whether, whether the current custodians of it are right or not, that's a whole different question. But I think that the building is still usable and very, very expensive to replace.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanna thank Andy Cooney, who's also a member of the CPC, for speaking tonight. I'd just like to let everybody here know that the CPC fully supported the efforts of the board of Select, I'm sorry, Select Board and the town administrator in this project. They've done an excellent job along with Town Council to vet this project and the, and the documents prepared to transfer this property to Annis Pals is extremely well-done. Also for the CPC, we had a lot of discussion with it, too. But what we came down on the side is, number one, the Historic Commission unanimously voted to support their application also. Secondly, I think everybody's been saying it, if Annis Pals doesn't go forward with us, it's gonna revert back to the town. And the town should certainly put up the money to repair that roof and preserve it. Annis Pals is also gonna contribute to that project for the roof. So it's not all on the town. And we all recognize the historic significance of the Hoxie School to the town. And as the CPC, we unanimously voted to recommend this to you and hopefully you will support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more folks that would like to be heard on this article, we can move to a vote on Article Nine. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, you will have thirty seconds to cast your votes. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed. One and two votes to twenty-eight votes in opposition. There's two more articles left. The next one is Article Eight. Article Eight on page twenty-three of your handbook requires, excuse me, a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Serunian.
We move that the town vote upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for the construction of an all-wheel skate park and to redesign the softball field at the Veterans Community Memorial Center and to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from Open Space Recreation Reserves.
You have the floor, Ms. Serunian.
The Recreation Committee has been very busy. Addressing a top fiscal year twenty-five priority within the Recreation Committee's facility needs assessment, Article Eight proposes allocating existing available CPC funding towards redesigning the existing closed skate park at the community building recreational area and constructing an expanded new all-wheel skate park. Supporting a wide range of non-motorized wheeled activities including skateboarding, rollerblading, BMX freestyle biking, scootering, and specialized equipment for individuals with disabilities, the revitalized public space will activate a fostering of inclusivity and encouraging people of diverse abilities and ages to come together and enjoy recreational activities as a community. A yes or I vote in favor of the motion provides funding for the proposed project as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion means that the funding would not be provided and the project cannot proceed at this time. The Select Board voted unanimously five zero zero to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Rich Lavoy.
Finance Committee voted unanimously seven to zero to support this article.
Thank you. Does the Community Preservation Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we recommend it.
Chair Barry Johnson says, yes, they do. I see that there are some folks in the audience, Alice, I do believe you were on the Recreation Committee. Would you mind speaking first, then?
Hi, my name is Alice Howe and I'm on the Recreation Committee. I live in Pocasset. If, if, people say something like, this is a skateboard park for five hundred thousand dollars. That's a misnomer. It's an all-wheel skate park. And what that means is every age can utilize this particular resource that we will build. The building of the skateboard park that we have currently is locked because it's a danger. It was built in two thousand and five on an underutilized tennis court. And, and it's made with wood. And if you, as the Recreation Committee has been very busy, because we did assess all of the outdoor facilities. And when we went and looked at the skateboard park, there were big holes in the wooden jumps. And it was really a lawsuit waiting to happen. Our kids and adults who wanna use this park can't use it in Bourne because we locked it up. So they've been going to Wareham or they've been going to Sandwich. And those parks are full. It isn't just teenagers. If you look at those parks, because it's all wheel, they can use wheelchairs, scooters, skates, bikes, skateboards, longboards. And, and it's not that they're gonna be racing around. These are built so that they're built for all ages. And I think the Recreation Committee has been busy. We're looking at trying to offer activities and recreation for all ages and all abilities. And in addition to this, to the all-wheel park, would also be reutilizing the softball field behind the building, because it would have to expand to make it a bigger all-wheel park. But then we would utilize some of the softball field that is there that's not being utilized. And so maybe there could be a park there, but for now, this would be an awesome opportunity for Bourne to, to have another resource for the community and I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Stephen Mealy from Sagamore Beach. I should explain that I'm not out to get the CPC Committee or Barry or anything this evening. I just have questions about completing things that we vote for. I think there was a reference made earlier to the hard covering on, on tennis courts and so forth. That's, to my memory, that's over two years old and we're finally getting to it. My concern is that we, we would vote this evening for a project that's a half a million dollars and we wouldn't see anything for several years or more. The history of our lodge projects in the town of Bourne and, and I'll, I'll speak to one that I was familiar with as a Select Board member, and that was the renovation of Buzzards Bay Park. And it took what seemed to be forever. We came back several times for more money. It is done. It's a lovely park, but it, it wasn't run by professionals. It was run by volunteers. So my question this evening about Article Eight is similar to what I had asked about with the recreational feasibility study that we positively voted for this evening. And that is, who's gonna be the project manager for the half-million dollar, yeah, the half-million-dollar project? Is it gonna be town leadership again? Are we gonna be hiring a clerk of the works? Is there a consultant involved?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask Marlene to answer your questions. Town Administrator?
So the project will be led in-house by the Recreation Department and the Town Administrator's Office. The contract will be in place with the designer. And then after bidding, if we're able to award the project, meaning if it's within budget, then a contract amendment would be issued with the designer to provide construction oversight services.
And as with the previous project, what's the timeframe for it?
It'll depend on, the pace of the Recreation Committee will follow their lead, but they are highly motivated. This was their number-two priority in their plan. So we feel like we have a solid proposal to put out to bid and it should be able to be, you know, it should not run into major roadblocks because of the, the advanced forethought that the Recreation Committee has put into it.
Okay, it's soft, but I'll take that.
Are you satisfied with that?
It's getting late.
Is that a good answer, Mr. Mealy?
That's satisfying. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Madam Moderator, I just wanna make a comment about this. One thing that's different this year about CPA projects is since our Town Administrator came in, any project that is town-related, that is using CPA funds, has to go through the capital outlay project. It has to be developed in conjunction with the- It has to be developed in conjunction with the capital outlay process. And a lot of times, what used to happen with CPA projects is departments would go directly to CPA, get money, and then they'd come back and they'd say, oh, we have like $200,000 for this tennis court thing, but it wasn't on the list of projects the administration was prepared to supervise and do procurement for. So we have a very good new process that I think will really help us be effective in implementing town-related CPA projects.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article Eight? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to move to a vote on Article Eight. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld devices, you have 30 seconds to cast your votes. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed, with 99 in favor, 22 opposed. This is the last article, Article 21. We did it. Article 21 on page 38 of your handbook is a zoning article, and therefore it requires a two-thirds supermajority vote. Does the Planning Board have a motion on Article 21?
We do, Madam Moderator.
Ah, I recognize Planning Board Member Liz Brown.
We move that the town vote to approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
May I have a second?
Second.
You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a very boring clerical thing, so we'll end that way. Planning Board conducted a public hearing on March 6, 2024, to review amendments to the Bourne zoning bylaw, Section 1238A, Point 4B, traffic and internal circulation, to discuss deleting 25 from the phrase 527 CMR 25, as it currently appears. This article is, amends that section relative to site plan review for traffic and internal circulation for fire equipment access. The amendment would delete the number 25 from the 527 CMR 25 that currently appears, because several years ago, the Massachusetts Fire Code was rearranged, and Chapter 25 is now Chapter 18. And so to keep it evergreen, it's recommended to delete the chapter language and keep the CMR to encompass the entire fire code, so we don't have to do this again. The Planning Board voted unanimously, 5 to 0, to recommend approval of this article. A yes or an aye vote in favor of the motion would amend the zoning bylaw to make this change. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo, and the zoning bylaw would not be changed.
Thank you. Does the Select Board have a recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Serrunian.
The Select Board voted unanimously, 5-0, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we do.
I recognize Kathy Legace.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, 7-0, to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 21? Seeing and hearing none, we may move to a vote on Article 21. This vote requires a two-thirds supermajority. Using your handheld devices, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Planning Board has passed, 107 votes in favor, three in opposition. Thank you. At this time, we have concluded all of the articles in the annual town meeting, and I will now entertain a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor of dissolving annual town meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed! Hearing none, this meeting is dissolved. Thank you, Bourne.